Welcome to the Evanston Township High School Board of Education Meeting, November fourteenth, two thousand and two. Can we have a roll call, please?
Kenzie?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Monsell?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Rolowitz?
Here.
Teterich?
Here.
Savage Williams?
Here, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Thank you. All right, we're at items for information. The first item is recognition of National Merit and National Achievement Scholars.
All right, take it over, Dr. Kenzie. There you go.
All right, so we're going to invite now Ms. Beth Arie, who is our College and Career Services Coordinator. And you can tell we have a fabulous group of honorees among us. And Ms. Arie is going to walk us through not only talking about National Merit semifinalists and what it means, but also to be able to honor each of them and come forward.
Great, thank you so much for having us this evening. The students being recognized this evening are a few of the approximately sixteen thousand semifinalists in the sixty-eighth National Merit Scholarship Program Competition. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for National Merit Scholarships that will be offered in the spring. As high school juniors, these students entered the two thousand and twenty-three National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT NMSQT. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than one percent of the U.S. high school seniors includes the highest scoring entrance in each state. The two thousand and twenty-three ETHS National Merit Scholarship Corporation semifinalists, oh, I guess we should have given some instructions, I'm sorry.
I was waiting, just go ahead and finish, Beth, we'll get there.
Okay, well, I was going to announce them.
So, students, as Ms. Arie calls your name, you can come up to, we'll do it all together.
Yeah, I was just going to read.
Have them to stand up. And once Ms. Arie's finished, you're going to step around the table. We're going to either shake your hand, fist bump, and we'll have a nice pen to give you on behalf of the district, so that's how we'll do that.
Thank you. I am learning in my coaching days here now that I need to be more explicit with my instructions. I was thinking, once I started reading their names, they would just come up, but that's not an expectation I should have. So, thank you, Dr. Campbell. So, I am going to start calling up our semifinalists, and we're going to start with Francis Brady. And Emmett Ebbels Duggan. Caroline Clearman. Jason McDermott. Sophia Shufelt. Max Smith. Rex Whalen. Jane Watson. And Luca Zarega. Congratulations, semifinalists.
All right, you all can come on around, and we're going to shake your hands.
On the inside? That's perfect.
Congratulations, and here's your pen. Congratulations.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Way to go. Way to go.
Congratulations.
Way to go. Good job. Great job.
And as is our tradition, we will excuse our semifinalists and families for the evening. Thank you so much.
But you're more than welcome to stay.
Places. Clearing out. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. All right, so as Carrie moves up, our next item is our Year in Review Report. Open, oh, I'm sorry. She's probably going to do them both, right?
She'll be joined by Dr. Beavis, and actually, both of them will be at the table for both presentations tonight.
Three, and then I'm going to start with the brief opening of school, and then the year in review, and then I have a few slides at the end, just some highlights from the Illinois report card that's publicly available. Okay. So, opening of school, total enrollment. This is our official enrollment as of September thirtieth, and it's always off on October first because on that day, someone exits and someone enrolls. But this is our official enrollment that we have every year. So, I say it's down slightly, it's down by thirty-eight students from last year, thirty-six ninety, but still consistent with where we were in the last five years, four years, actually. And then we look at our enrollment disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and I thought it would look bigger than it does, but, so when I look at, if I look at, so for example, our African-American, black, and I know these numbers look small up there, my apologies, it looks like a difference of about a hundred students over the course of five years, so even proportionally, it looks like it's going down, it's a difference of about a hundred. Our Hispanic, Latinx enrollment looks like it's an increase over the five years, about eighty students, and our white enrollment is pretty flat and consistent, it's just a difference of five between the five years, so that's a pretty flat, steady enrollment rates. Our special ed enrollments, it's just down slightly, that's just down by thirty-six from last year, and pretty consistent from the years prior. And then our bilingual program, which is much smaller, is forty-seven this year, up from last year, consistent to where it was a couple of years ago. Because they're just all at the highlights I pull from the opening of school, the rest of the data in there looks at like course enrollments, the sections, and disaggregated, I mean, separated by department. Any questions?
Questions, board? So, you said the, trying to get the number of black students. Get it back to that slide, yes.
Yes.
So, it's the difference between two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes, ah, yes, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, not twenty-two, twenty-two.
I know what you meant, I know what you meant. It's about a hundred students.
Yes, like ninety-nine.
Any, I know that now I'm asking probably a question that you don't know the answers to.
I'm trying.
Yeah, any, any ideas as to what this means, we're losing students?
No, I, no, I'll be honest, I have not looked at like enrollment forecasting that comes out of District sixty-five, or how that plays into this.
A hundred feels like a lot.
In five years.
And, yeah, feels like a lot, feels like a lot, and I consider that losing, I'm thinking of families that are not, are no longer in our community, that feels pretty significant. You know, we can all speculate about why, and you know, the cost of housing in Evanston, we know that that's an issue for a lot of people, a lot of families. So.
I'm sorry, I don't have any data like that.
The data doesn't show that, so actually, I appreciate you.
No, and I don't know how to show that.
Not speculating when the numbers don't help you answer that question.
No.
So, it was a rhetorical question.
Although, it does seem like it brings up the possibility of aligning, finding alignment or finding with the E-Plan, and some of the findings in the E-Plan, and how can we, is there any correlation to some of the data in the E-Plan? Pete, I'm looking at you, and you. That, I mean, that's extra work to do, but maybe there's some possibility for, maybe that's what Northwestern people can do for us.
Or maybe like the city.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like we're speaking to larger demographic trends here.
We are, we are, definitely.
In general, and it certainly is concerning, right? And I think if we were to, what we also want to be clear on, and we want to look at, I think, is we should probably do just a quick demographic study going back to enrollment in District sixty-five in the transition years to see that we're not losing students. I have a hunch that we're not, I have a hunch that we're retaining students in that demographic, but I think it speaks more to a community-wide issue.
Yeah, because this is, this mirrors the community. I mean, we are losing the black community in Evanston, so you can see there's a steady decline, not just, you know, a couple of years.
Right.
But the decline has been steady since two thousand and eighteen, and that's consistent with what's happening in Evanston with the black community.
And that's before the pandemic.
Yep, yep, it started before.
Yeah.
It might be a good topic for the City School Committee meeting, which usually happens in the fall.
Yeah, I agree.
It does, something that we can certainly discuss.
That's a great idea.
So, we're laughing because of something.
Because we have to get a schedule.
Because we need to get that meeting on the calendar, and we know it's not on the calendar, so this group knows, so that's why we're sort of chuckling. It has nothing to do with you. Other questions? Thank you, Carrie.
All right, no problem, okay. Okay, so now, for the next set, is year in review from last year, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year data. So, got ahead of myself, okay, so this report is an opportunity, took as an opportunity to incorporate some new data points that I've not been able to previously report. So, we've been able to disaggregate some student well-being measures, and added some additional post-secondary planning and career readiness measures. And I've just, we've disaggregated the freshman-on-track data because it's not disaggregated in the report card, so that was something to add into this report that's not a duplicate of what you can find in the report card. We've organized the report by section, so there's the social-emotional learning and well-being section, and with that is our qualitative, our survey data, which has students reporting on sense of belonging and connectedness, and student involvement in extracurricular activities. We have a section on academic and attendance, which includes GPA, advanced coursework, and attendance, and then a section on post-high school planning, where we have some information on career pathway and info sessions. I meant to write work-based learning experiences, not world-based, but maybe they are world-based, summer internships, and then post-secondary enrollment within the first two years of high school graduation, and then six-year post-secondary graduation. So, this report includes all students enrolled last year in the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year as opposed to, as opposed to just graduated cohorts, which I, previous reports, were focused on just graduated cohorts, but starting last year, we've been trying to report on all of our students, students that we have in the building, not just once they leave the building. And so, the cohorts we have are the class of two thousand and twenty-two or earlier, and we say or earlier because we have students who graduated in four years and those that did not, so we've got our fifth-year seniors, but they're, but they were in our school last year, and so we're capturing them in this report as much as we can. Class of two thousand and twenty-three juniors, the two thousand and twenty-four, which were sophomores, and then the class of two thousand and twenty-five, the freshmen. And the report, where we can, is disaggregated by race, gender, and male status, IEP. So, as we continue, and my team really is trying to work on focusing on data reporting and visualization through an equity lens, in addition of the qualitative data from the school-wide surveys, being able to disaggregate that by race, ethnicity, and gender, this is how students are self-reporting, is what we are reporting here. And because it's self-report, and we have this in our climate survey, we're able to include students who identify as male, female, non-binary, transgender. So, to have enough students to be able to report that is new this year. And then, we started this last year, and we are just intentionally using colors in our charts and graphs to avoid bias, or assessing, assigning value to different groups, our measurements. So, we started it last year, but we use our ETHS branding color palette that you find around the building. Okay, so just some highlights, so these are overall highlights, and then my charts have more disaggregated data, but overall, over half, fifty-six percent of students reported feeling like they belong quite a bit or completely. This data comes from our well-being climate survey that we have students take at the end of February. It's every year around the same time. A quarter of students report feeling connected to adults at ETHS quite or extremely. Just about half, forty percent, feel that most or all of their teachers are really interested in how they're doing outside of class or school. And the majority of students from the five essentials reported feeling safe, comfortable, and respected with their teachers. Last year, our average daily attendance rate was ninety-two point eight percent, which is higher than the Illinois state average daily attendance. Ninety-three percent, excuse me, of our class of two thousand and twenty-five is on track for graduation in four years, according to state measures. And then ninety-one percent of the senior, the class of two thousand and twenty-two, took at least one honors dual-credit AP or project lead-the-way course. Seventy percent, when you take out, and we look at just, we zoom in on just the portion that took at least one dual-credit AP or project lead-the-way, that was seventy percent. We're reporting this year, four hundred and eighty-six students that participated in work-based learning experiences, and this is some new data we're able to report this year. And from there, we're able to look at, zoom in and see the how many students, so twenty-eight students that participated in a ten-week paid summer internship, and then of those, five that were hired at the end of their internship. So, this is just our composition, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but this is just our, the student body composition, the demographic that are from, that are in this report from last school year. And I think I have one more slide, I got my slides mixed up, sorry. Couple more highlights. So, all of our subgroups achieved a final unweighted GPA of two point eight-one or greater, and the mean GPA of all students was three point two-five. And two point eight is the GPA is a state threshold, that's the threshold that the state uses for, in the Illinois report card, and I believe this is the first year that I've reported that every subgroup has met that threshold, and actually, all just, even, some are just over it. Class of two thousand and twenty-two, four-year graduation rate was ninety-four percent last year, and the class of the five-year, which would be the class of two thousand and twenty-one, was ninety-five percent. And then three-quarters, seventy-six percent of our students from the class of two thousand and twenty enrolled in a post-secondary institution within two years of graduating from ETHS. And that data comes from the National Clearing House, and usually comes in around this time in December every year. All right, so our SEL well-being data, so here is where overall, over half fifty-six percent of students feel they belong at school quite a bit or completely. So, this chart, I have students disaggregated by race, ethnicity, that's the blue, and then the female, male, and non-binary, non-binary transgender is in the orange bars. Just note, when you look at our charts, when we have two, when we have it split by two, we use blue and orange. When you have like three different measures, is when we use the yellow, green, blue, we're trying to be consistent, so visually, it's easy for you to understand. So, it's pretty consistent, the top, the darker shaded at the top is those that are reporting quite a bit completely, and the lightest shaded on the bottom are students that are reporting not, not at all, or just a little bit. And then somewhat is that, that middle group. All right. So, students, while students feel like they belong quite a bit, we have a lower percent that reporting feeling quite or extremely connected to adults at school. There's a larger portion kind of in the middle, and along the not at all or slightly, and this is consistent across most of our, all of our groups by race, ethnicity, and a little bit more different when we look at it by gender. And then, students, we asked students if they, how many of the teachers they feel are really interested in how they are doing outside of school. Overall, just under half forty percent reported feeling most or all of their teachers are really interested. And then you can see this disaggregated by race, ethnicity, fairly consistent. And then one more data point is looking at the participation in extracurricular activities as a way of connecting to the school. So, this here reports students who participate in athletics, the extracurricular clubs, or any fine arts programs only. And so, overall, last year, sixty-five percent of students participated, which is up from the prior year, which is when remote learning. The way this chart is, is the two thousand and twenty-one school year is what's the, the bottom is in shaded, and then that extra, the top part, the darker part, is the percent that participated last year in two thousand and twenty-two school year, so across the board, it's up from the prior year. We are going to look into future years, not future years, but future like data collection of additional ways to capture how students are connected outside of just these three areas. All right. So, academic and attendant measures section, this is in the report card. Our average daily attendance rate was ninety-two point eight percent last year, the Illinois average was ninety point seven. And we can see this, the all students is on the far left, and then you can see it disaggregated by race. This one's gender, this is based on how students are identified in our system, whether or not they have an IEP, and whether or not they're eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. And then the dotted line, that ninety-five percent, that's the state threshold of what they're expecting for average attendance rate. All right, class of two thousand and twenty-five, last year's freshmen, ninety-three on track, percent on track for graduation, and this is in four years, knowing that we keep students longer if they don't graduate in four years, but this is how the state defines it, and so we have this disaggregated by race, ethnicity, gender, whether or not they have IEP, and again, whether or not they're eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. So, and this one, the dark part, the darker shaded, is the percent less you that are on track for graduation, and the lighter shaded is that portion that is not. And then, average cumulative GPA, so this is for the class of two thousand and twenty-two, the seniors, and earlier. So, for that group, because it's their final GPA at the end of the senior year, for all students was three point two-five, and the two point eight threshold for the state, for the state reporting, you can see that every subgroup met that, even our students who have an IEP are just above it with two point eight-one. And then one more chart for the academic section is, and this is also the class of two thousand and twenty-two and earlier, so we're looking at by the time, the end of their senior year, what portion, percent, took at least one honors AP or project lead-the-way, actually, also, we have included dual-credit course. So, overall, ninety-one percent took at least one honors dual-credit AP or project lead-the-way course. That's when you zoom out for the larger circle, and then when you zoom in for the darker shaded circle, that's AP dual-credit or project lead-the-way only. So, ninety-one percent of the whole cohort took, included honors, and then advanced course AP, dual-credit, or project lead-the-way, and seventy percent had AP dual-credit or project lead-the-way. And then we have the same disaggregated by race, ethnicity. And then, a few more slides on post-secondary planning, post-high school planning, excuse me. So, seven hundred and sixty students viewed the virtual career pathway information sessions that were led by MIAC, I hope I said it right, last year. The, the school year before, in two thousand and twenty-one, reported it was five hundred and ninety-eight. And then, we're also able to report the number of local employers that came to the Career Pathways Fair in March, and then the different shaded circles are the different pathways. So, for example, of the thirty-three employers, eleven came from agriculture, food, natural resources, two from arts and communication, we have finance, business services, information tech, seven from health science and technology, human and public services, and then manufacturing, engineering, and trades. So, those were the virtual sessions, and then we have data on the students who participated in the work-based learning, so we have four hundred and eighty-six students. And then, the chart kind of that goes alongside is all the different types of work-based learning experiences they could have done. We zoomed in on the internships, so we had summer internships, and then below that, twenty-eight are the, the number, the different pathways of the type of internships they did. And then of those, we can see five students were hired after their summer internships, so two of them were hired from health sciences and technology, one hired from human and public services, and two hired from manufacturing, engineering, and trades. And so, we're reporting this is our, like, new this year, and we're excited to watch this number grow every year. And then, our graduation rate, this is all reported disaggregated in the report, also mirrors what's in the report card, but it's a district goal, and it's important to lift up. So, the blue is the four-year graduation rate, and then the, the yellow is the five-year. So, the class of two thousand and twenty-two was ninety-four percent four-year. The year before, for example, the class of two thousand and twenty-one, it was ninety-three point three percent. And then when we go up to their five-year, last year, it went up to ninety-five percent. And all of that's in the report disaggregated by race, ethnicity. I will just add a little note, when I, the, the graduation rates, four-year and five-year, for students with an IP and students identified as English learner, I add, we add the six-year, that's the little green bar at the edge of that, because we know some, some students, especially students with IP, stay a little longer and may take, showing up to six years. Shows a difference and a little bump. And then our last couple of slides for this, post-secondary enrollment, any time in the first two years after high school, so that's why this goes up to the class of two thousand and twenty, class of two thousand and twenty. A fall two thousand and twenty-two, and there were seventy-six percent students that had enrolled in a post-secondary college, two-year or four-year after high school. And this is the only post-secondary data that I have. I don't really have a way to capture any other post-secondary pathways or activities outside of this college enrollment, so I know this only captures a portion of our students. This is what we're looking at. So, the two ways that I report the post-secondary graduation rate, so when I look at the whole cohort, so for example, class of two thousand and fifteen, there, the entire cohort, fifty-eight percent graduated from a post-secondary institution within six years. But, when I look at the, when we report the students who enrolled, so those students who enrolled in a post-secondary in their first two years, of those, for the class of two thousand and fifteen, sixty-eight percent had graduated within, from an institution within six years. And I have one more note about this, here we go. So, for the class of two thousand and fifteen, for example, the national six-year completion rate, six-year college completion rate was sixty-two percent, and the Illinois six-year completion rate is sixty-four point six percent. So, our class of two thousand and fifteen is, is above the, the national and the state six-year completion rates. Okay, those are just the highlights, so any questions for that?
Thanks, Carrie, I think this is really a nice.
I think this is really a nice visually understandable report. I mean, we don't love all the data, just noting that at the front end, but, but the way it's been presented has made it easier for all of us, I think, or well, speaking only for myself, easier to understand. So I just want to hone in on one thing, because I'm sure other people have questions too. And the one thing is the on-track number, which is like ninety-three percent, I think, freshman on-track number, because it seems to me that should be a focus for all of us, because whatever follows, whatever data reflects, the discrepancies between our students based on race really starts with the freshman year. I mean, that's the first time we, we get a hold of these students. So I'm curious about what we know, and maybe this is a better question for Pete, you know, relates to the work, frankly, of Cradle to Career, and in particular, the Prepared for Adult Life working group that Pete and I have been on for the last ten years, the, not to be too pointed about the length of time we've been working on this, but I'm, I'm particularly curious about what the seven percent that is not on track, what is that profile? And I mean, I'm, I'm making certain assumptions in my head, one of which is, are these the students who come to us not reading at grade level? And what are we doing? So I'd like to hear a little bit more about what we know about that group, because it seems to me that needs to be a huge focus, and I know it already is. But, you know, tho- those students who are not on track from the get-go should be, you know, kind of, you know, top of mind in everything we do, so that we don't see the discrepancies later on.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, what we know, well, we know that the students aren't earning credits, number one. That's the, that's chiefly the, the issue, right? Number two, there's no single story, right? Some of, of the students in this demographic group, I would, I would say that we do see a significant difference between our Hispanic and Latinx students and our Black students. And what jumps out to me at first blush is the eighty-six percent on-track number for our Hispanic, Latinx students. That, that to me is extraordinarily troubling. I think we'd have to really double down and see what kind of language supports we have, what we're doing for our students in that demographic. We also know that, you know, what's not included in here is students who are school-avoidant are probably in here as well. Students who are in-school truants, as we call, that's one of the, you know, students who are in the building but not in class. We've done an excellent job this year of getting kids, being very proactive about providing a, a web of supports around students who are in-school truants. They're here, but they're not attending class, and if they're not attending class, they're not getting credits. It trends pretty evenly with our attendance data, these numbers, the ninety-three percent and, and, you know, the eighty-five and things like that, so there's a correlation there. But that's just a couple of the things we've done this year in particular. We had a big problem last year with in-school truants. And it's really school avoidance at school, while at school, which is extraordinarily troubling. So we've done, we've made efforts in that direction.
It is troubling, but it's also interesting that the students are here. So there's something that must be here for them, the social connection or something.
In fact, in fact, to that point, we not only are providing academic supports and, and, and real counseling supports, right? We also have, are working with Northwestern on really finding out with our NIRA group, doing some research on students who are in-school truants, to find out, and that'll be more qualitative, so that'll be more in line with really finding out the why, and not just the numbers around, around what.
Well, and I don't mean to overstate that, you know, there's something attractive that brings them to the school, but not the actual classroom. But it also could be that there's something not good about whatever the home situation is, so this is just the better of the alternatives for them, so.
Thank you for raising that, though, it's extraordinarily important.
And I think I want to underscore what Dr. Beavis just said about the qualitative piece to that, really getting to the whys to why some of the students, you're here every single day, and what's going on in the class. Are there skills-based issues, like, whatever the issues are that keep some of our kids from actually going to class but coming to school, we want the, we're sitting with some qualitative, want to know the qualitative understanding of that.
Well, and I would add, some of that seems to be captured in the well-being aspect of the report, and those seem to have a relationship between the same group reporting, right, feeling less sense of belonging or connectedness. And so, and I think it's, you know, and I'm going to say this, I, I really don't think there's an audience, but to all the teachers out there, I love you, and I would like to shift to that space of what can we do in our classrooms to make them places where all of our kids want to go. For, and I understand families and, you know, kids skipping and all of those pieces are, are important, but I want to start the conversation with how we can look at our own practice first versus putting it on the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Pat?
Thanks, Carrie, and Pete as well. So you, in a couple of the charts, you talked about like extracurriculars and the career pathways, and you kind of contextualized it with COVID. And I was just wondering if maybe either there's a particular area you could talk about, or just in general, sort of, how does this fit into the context of the last three insane years of these kids' lives? And sort of, what does that look like? Again, you could pick a particular area, or maybe just talk generally about the data over the course of, of these years.
So I'm going to start and see if I get to your question, and then you can help me. Okay. So if I start with the extracurricular, and I tried, I tried to show like 2022, 2021, and 2020, and it was so messy, and no clean way to visually do it, but so, so I can show you that this past year, right, participation in the extracurricular activities that we have defined here, which is our athletics, our school-sponsored clubs, and the fine arts programs, is up, but it's still lower than what it was pre-pandemic in 2020. So I didn't have really a clean way. But we have talked about it, we started talking about it, and Dr. Campbell, before the pandemic, and we're talking about it again, is finding ways to capture how students are connected that are not just in those buckets that, for example, that I'm like referencing. And so trying to find creative ways to ask students other, other areas where they're engaged, whether they're engaged here at school or outside. And so that's one thing we're going to try and, and do some more, collect some more data. I'm not sure that totally got to your question.
Yeah, I, I mean, that is helpful, but I guess I was wondering, like, with the academic data and graduation and other areas of wellness and so forth that you covered in this report, I'm wondering if, if you can give us a sense of like how things are going, if you're seeing in the data improvements now that COVID is sort of, kind of, in a better place, or, you know, kind of, how does it look over time, not just with this one year?
I can try. I see this as a recovery, a slight recovery. I don't think we're anywhere near where we were pre-pandemic. When we look at our SAT scores, you'll see that our math achievement is really struggling. And that points to the direct impact, I mean, the direct impact of an interrupted school year, plus the direct impact of an interrupted quarter where we started, fourth quarter, right, a couple of years ago, plus a transition year. People get in their sea legs. So you're, what is being exacerbated in the achievement data on, on the downward side are gaps, pronounced gaps in learning. And I, I pick math because math is sequential, and you can easily say, oh, when the students take the SAT, they struggle in algebra because two algebra was done remotely, or there are geometry concepts missing. Well, that's because in eighth grade or ninth grade, when they took geometry, they took it remotely. Or last year was a transition year. So there's a lot of things built in, and last year's a transition year meant teachers were trying to figure out exactly where kids were and trying to meet them where they were. They weren't teaching the, the, the scope and sequence of a traditional curriculum, because there are gaps that were pre-existing, coming in as a result of the pandemic. I think that what we see is a need to really focus on mathematics with our, with our partners at District 65, because when we get to that data, you'll see data there that is actually triangulated between the SAT college readiness benchmark and the state's benchmark. It's low. When we look at English Language Arts, we can make the case that the college readiness benchmark from the college board, our kids do fairly well. State has a higher cut, they do, they do worse, but it's, it's a big gap there. When you look at just the math, it's low on both. So that tells me that sequentially, and that just isn't just math, that's going to be any sequential kind of acquisition of knowledge and skills, that we're, it's going to take time to dig out, time to accustom ourselves. I think we're enjoying an incredibly productive school year this year. I'm seeing a return to normalcy in the classroom, a return to positive relationships in the classroom, a return to more engagement from the students, and our teachers being able to push kids harder now than they could have last year, or definitely the year before, when we just didn't know really what we were dealing with when we were pushing into homes with our, with our Zooms.
Right, yeah.
But I see that echoed in our extracurricular activities data. Kids have to get comfortable with being around other kids, so last year, better than the year before, and certainly trending in the right direction, but it's going to take some time. I, I wish it was quicker.
Yeah.
And that would be echoed when we look at this February, and our students will be in climate survey data, should see change, increases in that, and it's all just layered and connected.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I guess, thank you both for that, because I think it's important to take time to recognize this struggle for these kids, for our kids, and also to, you know, if it is going in the right direction, terrific, we want that, but also really, I think we have to, and I know you are, but keep focused on the fact that, you know, kids' lives have changed in so many ways, we don't even know yet, right? And we know a lot, and we still don't know everything. So I, I just really appreciate us really being mindful of that, and figuring out whether it's Mira's point about what's happening in the classroom, and what more can we do to support teachers in the classroom, to other, other measures that we can more, you know, focus on more. So, thank you.
Dr. Beavis, can you speak to the work of what you're putting together for our post-pandemic recalibration of, of student engagement and instructional practice?
Sounds interesting. Doctor Beavis, can you turn on your mic?
So, we have a curriculum instruction.
Try it again.
Still off, how about now? All right. Turn it off, I'm on now.
Thanks, William.
All right, so we have, thanks, William. So this is my moment, right? So we have this great committee we've started, right? It's called the Instruction and Assessment Vision Casting Committee. Dr. Campbell and I wrote a challenge statement to the committee, and the challenge statement is, you know, it starts with, ETHS is dynamic educational ecosystem. We recognize that racism is the most devastating factor contributing to the diminished achievement of students. ETHS strives to eliminate the predictability of academic achievement based on race. That should sound familiar, that's goal one.
Yes.
Yet that predictability endures today. And really, what we're doing is, we're engaging a broad-based committee in a process to develop a mission and vision statement that's aligned to what we want instruction and assessment to be, with the goal of eliminating the predictability of academic achievement. We're going to propose recommendations to Dr. Campbell and the board pertaining to classroom environment, instruction, student learning, experience, assessment, and accountability policies. And we'll support the, and that committee will also support the implementation and evaluation of those recommendations as they, as they move forward. We really want to meet folks where we are as an institution. We're going to, this group has, right now, we sent invites out of forty teachers across disciplines, and we look towards a variety of folks, both a diversity of, of beliefs, as well as, as, as diversity that reflected our institution racially. And, and so we're very interested in engaging these folks in a long-term process, some real wins and some real deep dives. We're going to confront data like we did tonight. These forty folks will look at, will look at grade distributions over ten years to look at where we are, where we were. And we're actually going to look at how predictable, how that predictability endures, and what we can do to break that cycle, because that predictability endures not just in SAT scores and not just in these external measures, it endures within our internal measures. And we've spent the last ten years being very, very intentional around whom we hire, why we hire, for beliefs around equity and growth mindset, and we want to see those beliefs mature into instruction and assessment. And we see that as the key, one of the keys really, to, to disrupting the status quo that has endured, and hasn't just endured for ten years, it's probably endured for twenty or thirty, if you really want to go back to it. We've made gains in certain areas, but the pandemic has really hit a hard reset. All those numbers kind of resettled to where they, where they were. And when we look at our achievement data later, if we want to look at the SAT data, the disparities are consistent with what Sean Riordan showed us years ago, when he said, if you're a white student in Evanston, you're getting one of the top educations in the country, and if you're a Black student, you aren't comparable. It's not a comparable education, outcomes-wise. And we see that in the data and the school report card, particularly, we see it in, in reading Language Arts, but we also see it in math, and if we see it in math, that means that all that sequential stuff is, is packed in there. So we're gonna, we're going to engage in some heavy lifting with lots of people.
Yeah, that sounds awesome.
And it's not just those forty people. We're going to talk to teachers, we're going to talk, we're going to engage students, we're going to bring students on board, talk to parents, do outreach, do qualitative data, and quantitative data. Carrie's already putting together some data for us on the predictability. And I do call them, it is probabilistic model, and that's what really is, is really pushing this work. Dr. Campbell and I got together and discussed. Anything else to add? Do they get it?
It sounds great.
It does, it sounds amazing.
Because I think it, it, you know, coming out of the pandemic, there were certainly things that we needed to revisit regarding instruction.
Yes.
And really examine our beliefs around instructional practice, and what, some of the things that we were, we learned, some things that we want to keep, some things that we never want to go back to. And I think this is an opportunity to really engage our stakeholders for a vision around teaching and learning that's consistent with the, the girls that we currently have for the, for the district.
I can't wait to hear about this group and what you come up with, what kind of information you roll out. I'm sure it's going to be ongoing, so I'm not going to say, you know, a final product, but I just really, it just sounds like an incredible thought process.
It's an excellent opportunity that we don't want to pass by, we want to, want to maximize impact, so, absolutely.
Other questions, board?
I have a question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information. I'm looking at the student well-being survey, and I was just curious, do you happen to know what the response rate was to that survey?
Yes, we have a great response rate. This is over, it's almost twenty-nine hundred students, so about three-quarters of our student body.
Great, that's great. And then also, I just wanted to say thank you for including our transgender and non-binary students in the data, because we can kind of see that their numbers are not, in, in the connectedness and the belonging areas, their, their numbers are not as great as the other students.
Correct.
And so it's important for us to have that information, so we can understand that. I had another question. Oh, I know what I was going to ask. And then I was just wondering, as far as for this survey, is there any possibility or potential for having a sort of comment section or a feedback section where students can sort of elaborate on what their answers are? can sort of elaborate on what their answers are?
So I do not believe we have any open-ended comments sections. It's a really long survey. It orig, it's the survey that for years was our substance abuse, was part of, sub, substance abuse. And then over time, we've developed it to become more than just that and really build on it as our well-being climate. So we don't have in this particular survey, a lot of space for open-ended comments, just because of the length of it. And we really, there is a wealth of data that we really want, that we use for internal programming placement. And so to, I don't know if it's a good fit for this one, but if there's something that you really want me to explore, I can find other ways of capturing that. And I have a lot of other ways of capturing qualitative data.
Yeah, I was just, because it just had me kind of wondering, looking at the responses, how the kids are feeling about it, you know? The ones that are not feeling as connected and as supported, why they are not, why are they're feeling that way?
Yeah, okay. You look, I'll look under that. Thank you.
I can kind of add to your, the answer to your question, but I, I mean, I take the survey a lot. So I actually took one today about social and emotional learning. And I think that the surveys, they actually do have a little bit of, sorry, the table creaked, open-ended questions. And at the end of this one, there was, there's a place to add feedback to. I, I don't know if it's the same survey, but from what I've seen, that's, I think it's there.
This is the one in, the end of February?
Last year?
Yeah.
I think it was then, too, yeah.
So, and I think what you're talking about is the ongoing progress monitoring and PE and wellness for social-emotional learning, which is much shorter and does provide that opportunity for you to give sentences and experiences. And Dr. Rosick's work has been really instrumental in blending all of our social-emotional well-being that was in February, that was really long, and then putting together exactly what you're saying, so you're right. You are able to give that feedback, and we blended the two to give information.
Yes, thank you. So we have, yes, all students in, through their PE wellness are doing, we're doing this project that we've been doing, looking at social-emotional, and we do have a lot of qualitative data on that. It's, it asks, there are some similarities, and then there's, there's, it's much different, a little bit shorter. So there are ways, different spaces we can capture that. Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It's a wealth of information.
I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done? Oh.
Yeah, are we going to move to 12C? Is this?
I was writing notes. Okay.
I thought we were going to come back, I'm so excited. No, 12A.
I'm sorry.
That's the acceptance of it.
Oh, yes, you did. I want to see this.
So we're just going to preview it a little bit.
Okay, good, because I have a question.
A little preview.
Okay.
So you want to do it?
I'll do it. I only, okay, so our summative designation, this is on my slides, is commendable. So exemplary, this is from the Illinois Report Card. Exemplary is the top 10% of schools. Comprehensive is the bottom 5%. So commendable means there's no underperforming subgroups. Our graduation rate is over 67%. Targeted, if you're in a targeted group, it means you have one or more student groups, subgroups, that's below the comprehensive all-student group. So just brief intro of what that is. And then I have just a few slides on our, okay, again, this doesn't look as good on the big screen, our report card. So this is SAT. So this one shows, this is the English Language Arts. This is their five-year trend, six years, because we had that one year where there was no data from 2020. So the top, excuse me, is, is us, ETHS, district, and then the state. So you can just see where we are, the very, very top is 2022, and then 2021, and then down to 2017. So you can see where we are. The orange is partially meets, and then there's approaching, and then the SAT meets expectations that exceed. So you can see where we are, still lower than prior years, but the state. And then if we look at it just aggregated by race, ethnicity, so the very top is all. This is ETHS, this is English Language Arts, and then we have by race, ethnicity, the state, this is all on the state report card, white, black, Hispanic, and Asian. And so proportionally where students are from the SAT, those are juniors who took the SAT, these are last year's juniors SAT, this year's seniors. This is the district, and then I put up the state. So you have the state, you kind of had to search for that, but the state data disaggregated by race, ethnicity for English Language Arts. I'll leave it for a minute for you to look at. And then for math, I have the same, this is our math, five-year trend.
Can you slow it down a little bit?
Sure, okay, do you want me to go back?
Yes.
Which one do you want me to go back to?
Right.
The ETHS?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you just tell me.
Okay, so this is the ETHS.
Okay. The next one is the state?
This one is the state, SAT, English Language Arts.
Okay.
Okay, you want math?
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
All right, the key piece here is, this, this achievement is very troubling, right? When you look at it, whether it's the state level or the district level. Yet according to the ranking, ETHS is commendable, because no subgroup of students is underperforming at the state level, which is maddening. Because what it does is it sets up a, it sets up a system where it's, it's, it's okay, and it's not okay. It sets up a system where it's okay to have 19% of students meeting or exceeding standards. It sets it up and it credentials that and says that's okay, and that's not okay.
It's not okay.
Whether it's math, whether it's English, whatever that marker is, that's not okay. And when I really dove into the data and looked at the commendable rating and how it was defined, I was, I, I am not happy with our achievement data, flat out, we talked about that earlier, but I'm also not, it's strange that the state would, I mean, this isn't just ETHS's rank, this is everybody, you know, you're commendable, and then we look at what the state numbers are, and we look at our numbers, and it's troubling that we would continue to be commendable on that measure.
Well, it's almost like there's a bell curve, right? Because it's the, it's at the top 10%, and I thought we were not doing bell curves anymore.
Right. That's what it is.
No, I'm just putting up the math. But this is all I had, was the ETHS math and then the state math. So if you have any more questions, or if you need any?
I could just point out one thing, why I see, why I want the focus really to kind of shift towards math one more time, and I can just, it's very simple. If we look our, 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 our black students for the percent, English Language Arts, right? We see that 17.1% meet the ISB benchmark, which is a higher benchmark than the SAT. Remember, it's a much higher benchmark. If we just took the college readiness benchmark from the SAT, that number would be 47%. Forty-seven percent of our black students took the SAT last April met the benchmark for the, for the national benchmark for the College Board, which is based on the predictability of getting a C or better in a college-level course, freshman year, all that good stuff. So that's a big difference, 47 to 17. That can explain that, right? Okay, so that's just a statistical kind of thing. What I can't explain is, the math SAT benchmark is 18%, and the state is at 11.2. That is very close and very low. Okay, there's not a big variation, it's not a 30-point shift between, the, the English, we saw a 30-point shift, right? Just based on where they cut the score. This one, we cut the score here, we cut the score here, we get the same, pretty much the same number, and it's low. So I'm saying that we have a, we have a significant issue with, with sequential courses in general, which math is a proxy for here. Not to say don't pay attention to English, but 47% is way more interesting than 17. Statistically, it looks interesting, they, okay, yeah, 47% met, they can read, writing, that's great, awesome, it's not the greatest, but it's okay. 17, that's just, that's just where they pick the number. But what I'm saying is, with the same metric, we're now between 18% and 11%, which means the distribution is far lower for our black students than ever before in math, overall, which is why we have to pay attention to sequentially what we're doing in mathematics.
So do you think the state is sort of structured at this way, because somebody is well aware of the fact that they're not putting any more money into public education? So we just, we just, you got what you got, and we're going to adjust the, the cuts to make it appear as if we're doing okay?
Yeah.
I don't know, that's just the cynic in me, but.
Yeah, I get it. I think that, you know, it's a way to, it's a way to, maybe that's where they set the cuts, but, you know, overall for the commendable piece. But, you know, I'm concerned about that, that these numbers are holding steady over, some of these numbers are holding steady over time, would, over like what we're getting, what we're seeing coming in freshman year, and we have to figure out a way to really resequence some things. And it's not just math, right? It's sci, you can see the same things in, in our, in our other courses that are sequential, and build on one another, skills-wise that way. Not to say reading's not still a primary concern, but I don't know what primary plus one is, but that would be where I would put our achievement. But again, you know, this is, we're digging out, we're starting to see what the impact of missing a year of, of in-person instruction and then see, and then coming back into a school setting. And it's all wrapped up into our well-being and to everything else, and so we're trying to, that's why we have the committee, that's why we're doing the work. But if you get a chance to look at the scattergrams that are available on the interactive, that, that tells us a lot, too.
Yeah, I guess, I'm curious, because I do have cynical views about the state as well, but I also am quite excited about the Equity Journey Continuum and their, I think, shift in, you know, really helping us to see how we might go about analyzing numbers, I mean, you know, the same metrics, all of these, but to kind of understand areas that we can focus on, like math or SATs, looking at even just our, our student population in certain spaces. And so I was wondering if we were going to start reporting out on that as well?
So it includes, and I apologize, I didn't think about, like, putting pieces of that up in here, too. That includes, incorporates some of the data that we're seeing in the report card. It includes five essentials data, student survey data, which is what I'm also trying to start reporting in that well-being, so that's included in there. But the five essentials, it's participation, it's that responses.
Right, but like the, the student learning, like we have a step one, right, out of four.
And linked to a lot of this.
Yeah, and I think then, you know, they're not saying we're commendable, they're, and they're, and it's a little bit more gracious, but I think if we brought that kind of into the forefront, and it requires then, we do the work, like you all are already presenting, but to see if we could shift that, I think would be really a great way of using the state in our favor, and, and less of their hypocrisy that's captured in that commendable score. And then it also boosts our hiring, because that, there is that level of accountability within that score of elevating educators.
And I'm, I'm actually wrong, but I believe the Equity, that Journey Continuum data is two years old.
Right.
So when you see next year's, it will be from 2021, I mean, that data is from 202021.
That data is from before the pandemic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so when it's on the report card next year, it will be from what we're talking about now, last year, 2021, '22 school year. So we're not going to see the changes that are, you know, we've been talking about post-pandemic now, like this year, for two years on that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So it's always going to lag, like a couple of years, probably, just something to keep in mind, as we will keep an eye on it and all of the measures that are within those.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that.
It's a lot to take in. All right. Thank you. Okay, we are at item D, district goals discussion. So I just want to make sure that every, at every meeting, we talk a little bit about the, our process for thinking about our goals. Our goals have officially run out, right? We're still, I know we're, we're still referencing those goals, but we just need to make sure that we're public about how we're going to go about looking at them, determining if, if we'll review, if we'll keep them, what needs to happen. We have talked about bringing in the ALMA group to kind of help us with that discussion, and I'm getting a lot of head nods, so I'm, I'm feeling like, I have not been in touch with them yet, but I can be in touch with them pretty, pretty much right away. Do we have any kind of thought, I'm asking the board about a timeline? I mean, if we could have them come anytime we wanted, I don't know if that's possible, because, probably, well, I don't know. But what, 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 what are we asking for? What are we thinking time-wise?
Well, given that our goals have technically expired, we should probably do it sooner rather than later, but realistically, I, I mean, I can't imagine we're going to get anything done before the holidays, so.
Oh, absolutely, before, not before the holidays.
So I think, you know, January.
Also, I'm sorry, I just was going to say, can we?
That, too.
Think of it in context with our, our retreat, our board retreat? Yeah.
Right, right, so we have a board retreat end of January, right? Right, right. So we can be, we can be thinking at that time. So January, February, maybe, maybe February after the retreat makes sense to me. Wouldn't be doing the retreat.
You mean as a part of the process, because during the retreat, we would still talk about, right? And then you're thinking about bringing ALMA in after we have an initial conversation?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, does that make sense? I just need to, I just need to be able to tell them something.
I mean, I think it makes sense either way. We could have the community input first and then talk, or we could talk for, I mean, I could see it both ways, so I don't have a preference. I think the calendar might dictate more.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll have to see what ALMA can do.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk to them between now and the next meeting. So when we come back together in December, I'll be able to report that.
Because they may even have some insight to a process, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right. Okay.
Hope you're willing to share them with us before they charge.
Okay, I heard that.
Well, yeah, honestly, I mean, it, it does seem to me that we got a lot of insight in the superintendent process, right? So there's probably some revisiting even with that information that we could do to help us in this.
Yeah, they know a lot about us.
Yeah, yeah.
They really spent a lot of time with us, and I expect that they will, we will find them resourceful and helpful through this process.
Well, and isn't ALMA doing a search for the cradle-to-career executive director as well, so, which is also, I think, you know, gives them even more understanding of the community, so.
All right, I'll get on that. Right away. Okay. Moving right along. Dr. Beavis, do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this year.
Are you sure? Okay. Okay. All right, item seven, FOIA.
Yes, we have two FOIAs in the packet. We have Hooper and Agnew. And the responses are in there.
Okay.
The letters.
Good. All right. Board committee reports. Do we have any, anybody who has attended a committee meeting?
No, we have a discipline meeting this week.
Right.
Tomorrow.
Okay. So we'll have that next, next meeting. Okay. All right, and student board reports. So Nicole, you are on.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hope you guys are well. Since the last time you heard from me, I've had the opportunity to make an appearance on Dr. Campbell's Wild Kit Way podcast, which was really fun. And now I have a couple updates on student life. Starting with the student union. We are planning our Student Voice Forum, which will be held on December nineteenth. And this is where we'll have table topics. We'll have a bunch of tables in the hub. And there will be topics and chairs for people to sit around and discuss those topics and ask questions. Some of the table topics include equity and extracurriculars, transparency between admin and teachers and students, tardies, lunch, education and race, and then also safety. Moving on from student union. Last Wednesday, after an email was sent about a gun found in school, there were a couple different types of reactions that I've heard and seen relating to the way the information was shared with students and families. Some students definitely felt like they were kept in the dark and wished that they had been updated throughout the day about the status of their own safety. But on the other side, through a surprising conversation with my English class, I did find that there were some students who were actually relieved to have been able to go through their school day without, like, the emotionally draining stress of, you know, knowing that they could be in danger. But although there were a lot of differences in reactions between students and families, a common theme for everyone was just kind of keeping the transparency, transparency and communication with admin. And then my last thing is the lunch survey. So recently, the student body has been, has had the opportunity to fill out a survey concerning lunches and cafeterias. And students are very, very happy to be able to voice their concerns directly to the administration and share their opinions and feelings about their own individual lunch experiences. I know that in previous reports, you might have heard me mention lunches a couple times. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Kinsey and Dr. Campbell and all the other people behind the scenes who were able to make the survey happen. And students are definitely looking forward to what administration can do with the survey results and just, you know, make school life a better time. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question for Nicole. So the first item, you talked about the table talks in the hub. Are those gonna be recorded? Are there, you said ask questions. Will teachers or administrators be at the tables? Kind of, can you just say a little bit more about how you'll capture that information?
Yeah, sure. So it's kind of like, well, Dr. Kinsey and Dr. Campbell will be there. But it's all student input-based. So we'll have tables and we'll have, like, the big butcher paper. And then the student union is already coming up with kind of conversations, conversation starters and questions. And then we'll, like, kind of initiate the conversation and then allow students to, you know, keep the ball rolling. They can write their complaints, concerns on the butcher paper, ideas, because we don't just want complaints, but we also want solutions. It's gonna be held on a Monday. So like a Wild Kit Monday is where we go through all eight, eight periods of the day. So we'll be able to have lots of student input and teachers can sign up their students, their, their class to come into the hub. And it's, hopefully, it'll be a really good time and we'll have a lot of input, good input.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we are at superintendent's report. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Just a few things, and thanks, Nicole, for shouting on the podcast. I can't wait till that comes out. You did a great job. So last month, we had a celebration for our support staff members, Sherry Iverson, Melissa Muncie Johnson, and Ingrid Strausberger, who were proud recipients of the 2022-23 Gilbo Arsenale Spirit Award at ETHS. Congratulations to each of this year's winners. And I should also pause to note that today is Operations Appreciation Day. I believe it's across the state, so we had a little bit of a celebration for all of our operations staff members and all of the things that they do to help to make ETHS do what it does. And so congratulations and thank you to our operations team that really keep the building looking spectacular and keep it cool, keep it warm. You name it, they do it. So my Listening and Learning Series continues this fall. And last week, I hosted the First Community Talk Back, which was held at Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. ETHS is hosting three more talkback sessions during the year. The dates and the locations are listed on the website calendar. The next one is gonna be in Spanish, January nineteenth, at St. Nicholas's Church in Evanston. And I hope that parents, guardians, and community members will share their perspectives with me and other district leaders, Dr. Kinsey, myself, possibly Dr. Beavis, at these events. So if there's any questions, comments, concerns about any host of things that are happening at ETHS, this is what these community talkbacks are for. And I'm hoping that parents and guardians and whomever else will join us. In March, you all will have a, we're, that one talkback is going to be a posted board meeting and that was, will be specifically about your goals. But if we need to adjust that moving forward, we can do that as well. The ETHS Community Advisory Council convened for the first time last month. And on the council with me are three ETHS students and five parents and community members. We discuss emerging areas of needs and share perspectives on school processes and initiatives. Our school produced newspaper, the Evanstonian, included an article about the council. The latest edition of the Evanstonian was just released today, and it was a pretty great article. So thanks for that, for the Evanstonian writers. And finally, we are all looking forward to the break for next week. There will be no school for the entire weeks and what week, and while kids will be back in class Monday, November twenty-eighth. So we're happy to be approaching, hopefully, a new norm at ETHS, fall break.
Wow, that sounds great. All right. Okay, we are at our finance committee. So the board has become the finance committee. And here we go. Got some information. Oh, thank you. Ooh, I have a script. Right. Pat, that must be me. Not you. Okay. I was looking for this. I am now officially convening the 2022 Tax Levy Public Hearing. This public hearing is being held due to the district's intent to adopt an aggregate level 5.5 in excess of the 2021 levy. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Did you publish notice of this hearing?
Yes, I did. On November third, it was published.
Thank you. The proposed levy will provide funds to support the usual expenses of Evanston Township High School. The amount in excess of a 5.5% overall increase is to be levied to ensure that our extension base increases by the tax cap of 5.0% plus any new property.
Anyone desiring to present testimony may do so at this time.
Maybe William. Ms. Williams, do you have any comments?
I do. I've prepared a brief presentation for the board this evening just to go through our property tax levy for the 2022 property tax levy. So just to say, the property, when we talk about our budget and how we are able to even make things happen in this building, property taxes are a major part of our budget, over eighty percent. And so it's a pretty big deal. And we wanna make sure that we do everything that we have to do to get it right. And so this truth in taxation hearing is one of them. And this is just a timeline of the different steps that we have to make sure that we're hitting in order to have all of our ducks in a row and secure revenue to keep ETHS running. So here, November third, as I mentioned before, and the proof is in your packets for this. And so that was when that was published. And then tonight, we're having the public hearing. December twelfth is when the tax levy will be adopted by the board, if approved after this evening. And then on December twenty-seventh, which is the last Tuesday of the month in December, the last Tuesday of December, that is when you have to file by. So before that date, we will get everything filed with the Cook County Clerk. And just a few terms for everyone that doesn't, you know, eat and sleep tax levy. The property tax levy is what the district does, request. It may not be what we get, it is what we request. And just making that distinction between the tax levy and the extension. The extension is actually what the district receives. And later on, when we get to talking about a balloon levy, it'll kind of make sense why I'm making that distinction. And then some other terms that are just heavily used when we're talking about property tax levies. CPI, the Consumer Price Index. I'm sure everybody's heard that term a ton lately when we're talking about inflation and how things have just really run wild and how high CPI is. So that is, that is also used when you're determining how much you will be levying for. And then there is also the equalized assessed valuation, commonly referred to as EAV, and it's, it's the total assessed value of property in the district. So for the property tax levy, it is based on what was extended in the prior year. And then you are able to increase your levy by five percent of what was extended in the prior year. Our, I'm sorry, this year it's five percent, because you can do the lesser of the prior year CPI or five percent. In this case, like I said, CPI has run wild, and so it is well exceeded five percent. That being the case, we are able to levy for a five percent increase of our property taxes. So that limit, five percent, is what we have to work with. As you know, in your packets and what was just read is that we're going to be going for 5.5%. So one may wonder, how do you go for 5.5 when you just said that the limit is five percent? And then what that is, I'll actually come back to that, is a balloon tax levy. And so a balloon levy is really a tool that's used to make sure that you're not just only capturing the five percent or whatever CPI is, but also whatever new property comes onto the tax rolls of that year. So whatever growth there may be in the district, you wanna make sure that as that comes onto the tax rolls, you're able to capture that revenue as well. And so you will do a balloon levy, which may be above what you would expect to receive in order to make sure that you're able to get everything that you have the opportunity to. So if you were to look at, and another thing that I have to say about this whole situation when it comes to Cook County, and I know that we've talked about it before, but I mean, I just have to say again, everything's been delayed. And so not just, as you know, we haven't received the revenue that we typically would have in the fall. Usually in August, we're receiving revenue from property taxes that hasn't been received yet. And, but not only is the money delayed, but also the reporting has been delayed as well. So as I mentioned, you know, you have to do your property tax levy based off of what was received in the prior year, what was extended. So you need them to tell you exactly what was extended, and they were unable to do so prior to the issuance of the, of the levy notice in the paper. So with, in the absence of that information, you just kind of have to make the best estimates possible. And so in the paper, we did put seven and a half percent, never intending to truly reach that, but we didn't know what new property was, the exact dollar amount that was extended. So it's basic, and if you were to put a lesser amount, then you have to run another notice if you need to increase it. So you're in a better position if you put the higher amount. And then if you have to decrease it, then that's what you do. So we put seven and a half percent as a notice, in the notice in the paper, recognizing that Cook County unfortunately just didn't have it together to give us concrete numbers. We had to work with what we had and that we could decrease if able. Now they have given us draft numbers, still not the final, but at least we have something. So then we felt more comfortable saying, okay, five and a half percent, if we come in there, we'll be okay. That's a reasonable number for us to levy for. And knowing that even if you levy too high, you can only get what's allowable by law. You're not gonna get more than you're able to. But you can just kind of shoot yourself in the foot, so to speak, if you don't levy high enough.
Right.
Because then you, you can't go back on that. And let's say that new property came in higher than that estimate. We don't get to go back and say, okay, we said we were gonna do five and a half percent, but hey, can we do six instead so that we can capture that? Once you send that to the Cook County Clerk, you're done. So that would be money that we wouldn't have the opportunity to use in our district and put towards all of the wonderful things that we're trying to do for our students here. So we wanted to just make sure that we were able to capture everything possible, which is why we did the balloon levy of five and a half percent and why we were even thinking of that seven and a half percent that was in the paper before. Just making sure that we're doing the best that we can to serve our ETHS community. I think I skipped one before. Okay. So as far as the levy and how it interacts with the budget, I already mentioned that the property taxes make up over eighty percent of our budget. So we know that it is a very big deal for us. And the budget consists of two, two different levies. It's a blend because of how our year falls. Of course, you know, when you talk about our fiscal year, it goes from July first through June thirtieth, not a, you know, January to December situation. So we therefore, we have two levy amounts and our blended rate is gonna be 3.2% for the budget year. And, you know, just detailing that the spring, in the spring, which is gonna be equal to fifty-five percent of the prior year's tax liability. And then in the fall, that second installment is approximately forty-five percent. We always have a spring and a fall payments in each year, but it's just a blend of the two. Oh, this slide looks terrible. I apologize. I will do white next time.
Yes.
I will make a note for that. But this was going to be the levy by fund, and I didn't print that off either. But I can definitely tell you that the education fund is the largest portion of that. And then from their operations and maintenance being second, which is very similar to how our budget works, we also have smaller portions for tort immunity. And then at the very bottom, there's a figure for debt service that is a little over three million. And the reason why it's at the bottom and offset from the rest is because you don't levy for debt service in the same way that you do everything else. Instead, they keep our files. When we issue bonds, they keep everything on record and you get, you, you automatically get the amount to cover your bond payments. And so when the board approves us to issue bonds, then once that process is done, we're automatically set up to receive the money to cover the payments for those bonds. So that's why that's separated out. But all of this information is in your packet. Sorry that it wasn't. Looked way better on my laptop. And then just to bring it home, on a single-family home valued at six hundred and twenty thousand, use that price point, because that was the average sale price for our home last year. The, the portion attributable to District 202's increase would be $198 on a tax bill that is $15,509. So just to give a concrete example of how this would affect someone's tax bill in Evanston, sometimes that's kind of helpful for people to just think about.
Yeah, that helps.
The meaning. And then just a brief slide on TIFs, tax increment financing. So we don't have any TIFs that are closing this year. But just to explain how it, how that interacts with our property tax levy. When a TIF is done, we know that the EAV for that TIF is frozen for the life of the TIF, which is typically 23 years. And so at that time, the district would not be recognizing any of the growth that's happening in that TIF district. And then when the TIF closes, that's when it comes onto the tax rolls, that growth, and we're able to start receiving those additional funds. That would be another reason why you would do a balloon levy because then you're going to see all of this new growth coming onto your tax rolls and you want to make sure that you're putting out a percentage, that you're levying for a percentage that you would capture any of that. But like I said, there's not any, there's none closing this year. We're not going to be seeing a TIF closing until 2026. But just providing some background because when they do close, that is something that we have to account for when we are doing our levy. Questions or comments?
Thank you for explaining that process, how you made the decision to go with the 5.5. That was really helpful for me to understand how you got there.
Yes. And so I will say, for anyone who looked at their packet, you know, last week, you may have seen that the memo has changed since last, from last week till today. But it's because I'm trying to be as responsive as possible. And Dr. Campbell as well wanted us to be, you know, as transparent as we possibly could with the information that we had. And so we then just updated the information today because we got it later last week from Cook County. So we are just working with what we're given at this point. So thank you for your patience in that, with that. And I just wanted to explain what was going on there. We weren't, it wasn't, nothing's on a whim here, but you know.
All right. Yeah, Cook County.
Cook County.
Questions? Anyone, questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a, yeah. If there, if there are, our hearing no further testimony. I now declare this hearing closed. All right. So we are now at our action items. The first action item, right? Am I right? Yes. Is acceptance of the Illinois School Report Card, and that's in our packet. Can I have a motion for acceptance?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Turn on your mic.
On 12A, right? Okay. Anti? Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teredge?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is approval of contract with Architect for Centennial Project, which is our ETHS foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Approval, anti, missing. Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teredge?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of Midas sponsorship called Get Wordin', approval of naming rights committee, the Nini proposal, wording, which is something we didn't do, we didn't do this.
It fell off.
Yeah, we didn't do it. We should have done it.
She went right to consent agenda.
Meeting date for, due to the April election and due to campus voting, we had to change the meeting date for April. It has to be so many days after the election. I can't remember how many. Approval of minutes from October 10th, 2022, regular meeting and closed session. Approval of bills and the personnel report. Was a question?
I think we need a roll call for the abating and working cash fund and the sponsorship and the approval of the naming. So that, we should just.
You jumped to consent agenda, but that other is not the consent.
Wait, I don't see that. So the approval of the consent agenda.
No.
Yeah, we're not there.
We're on 12C.
We're on 12.
12C, you have C.
So that's not the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, so it's listed.
It's listed as consent on that page.
Okay, I'll, I'll use, I'll use the computer.
Yeah.
All right, let me, let me do this again. I got it, thanks. Okay, 12C. I get it. I can see this now. Approval, okay, so 12C, approval of resolution, abating the working cash fund. And there are a couple of attachments with that.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anti?
Here, yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teredge?
Yes.
And Savage Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of commercial athletic sponsorships, Midas. And there's an attachment with that as well.
So moved.
Second.
Anti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Monsell?
Monsell.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teredge?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay. Approval of naming of, of an upstairs gymnasium with, with an attachment.
So moved.
Second.
Anti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teredge?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Now we're at the consent agenda.
We did do 12A, right? The report card?
Yes, we did that. Okay. So the consent agenda consists of the treasures report from September 2022, approval of bills, and the personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teredge?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we are at old and new business. Anybody have old or new business that they would like to bring up? If not, I would like to wish everybody a happy fall break. And this meeting is adjourned.
All right.